Somebody stole my gavel.
It's right there.
Oh, in front of me.
Hidden in plain sight.
Hit it under the mic. Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 2nd, 2021. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as the city council meets, we are ever thankful for the many kindnesses and generositys and gifts that we see floating around our town on an ongoing basis from a variety of fronts. We are honored tonight to be able to honor some members of our Batavia High School cadre for some outstanding accomplishments they've made, and we are going to be continuing this because we weren't able to get everybody here tonight, so we'll be doing this again for some more of their esteemed athletes from Batavia High School in the days ahead. Tonight, we want to certainly remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them as these men and women go about their vital missions. Also tonight, we want to remember those in our community who are sick or are affirmed, and we just ask that this moment of health and revitalization touch each and every one of them. We are ever mindful tonight that we are to issue the warning that we will continue to ask people to cooperate and wear face masks in the days ahead as we are still plagued by the pandemic, and we are doing everything we can in Batavia to deal with this. As a community, we should be very proud of ourselves that our pandemic numbers remain one of the best in the Chicago area as far as the number of people who have not been impacted by it. So, as a community, we should be thankful for this, and we are ever mindful of the blessings that have been showered upon us because of it. As always, we want to ask for direction and vision and understanding by the members of the city council as they go about their mission here tonight, and we just ask that we know that in their hearts and minds, each member of the council is here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Risotto, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Risotto?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
So, we have 14 present either in person or on the Zoom call, so we appreciate the cooperation of the city council. Moving then is the reminder from the chair that we please ask anybody that's going to speak tonight to use the microphone at the podium because we are recording this, it will be on BATV, and if you don't use the mic, it's very hard for the listening audience on TV to understand what you're saying. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, edited, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have anything this evening?
Your honor, I'm not aware.
Anybody else in the council? We have none yet. Okay, moving to item six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, would you present this, please?
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place unfiled the Committee of the Whole Minutes for May 25th and June 1st, 2021; Plan Commission Minutes for April 7th, 2021; Historic Preservation Commission Minutes from July 12th, 2021; Approvals: The July 23rd, 2021 payroll in the amount of $987,476.92; The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,407,67.21; City Council Minutes from July 19th, 2021; Approvals: Cow Executive Session Minutes for January 26th, April 20th, and May 21st, 2021; Resolution 21-AD-R approving a resolution to reject all bids, windmill cove, directional boring, and cable replacement, and rebid the project; Ordinance 21-35, vacation of the Foxglove Drive turnaround right-of-way; Resolution 21-79-R, authorizing a word of contract for well number four abandonment to Lane Christensen. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, Knapp.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Knapp for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion for approval of the consent agenda is approved. 14 yes, no, no's, and none absent. Okay, do we have item seven matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda? Do we have any of that tonight? Anybody? All right, moving then to item number eight, which is a presentation tonight to Batavia High School students who have earned state championships, and we originally thought we were going to do both wrestling and track, but I'm told tonight we're only going to do the wrestling and we will be bringing the track around next time, hopefully. I wanted to begin this tonight, I've asked Alderman Wolf, who is obviously most of you know is the voice of the Batavia Bulldogs on BATV, and he and his partner, Mr. Lindberg, do a phenomenal job. I really feel they're about as professional an announcing team as any small town and can ask for. I mean, they have all the details, all the facts, the figures, the plays, and they are a terrific asset to Batavia High School to have them on The Voice telling the fans out there what's going on, and I, in my travels around Batavia, I get into a lot of senior living communities, and a lot of the, specifically men and many of the women in those facilities, watch Batavia TV, and they always tell me how great it is that the two announcers from Batavia tell you who the player is by the number, and it's no guessing, and you know who's made the score, and how great this is that we really have a first-rate announcing team. So, I'm pleased that we have Alderman Wolf here tonight. But I just want to take a moment, I brought a couple of folders down from my office, and if you've ever been in my office, I have quite a showroom of Batavia memorabilia hanging on the walls up there, and I'm just going to talk about two of the posters I have. The first one is a poster of Sharon Moran, and Sharon Moran graduated from Batavia High School in 1960. And of all the, I'll call it famous athletes, and we've had some come out of Batavia High School, I find it really interesting that one of the very first was a female in the years of the 1950s and 60s when females weren't very popular or very present in most athletics. But Sharon graduated from Batavia High School in 1960, and according to the write-up here at the top of the folder, she played for the University of Arizona golf team for four years. After college, Sharon joked joining the LPGA Tour where she distinguished herself immediately by being named the 1967 Golf Rookie of the Year. And after completing successfully for 10 years on tour, Sharon dedicated herself to teaching golf, and she later became a golf broadcaster for ABC TV, and she covered many of the major championships and was author of a book on women's golf for Golf Digest magazine. She also had her own brand of sportswear, and so I just share this tonight because I think, you know, we've got in this group that are going to be coming before us here, I think tonight we have, you know, some folks that are to be watched in the future because I think we've got some future prized athletes that may be coming out of Batavia High School, but I just wanted to talk for a moment about how Batavia High School has a history that not many other high schools in the area have. And this poster, which I have in my office, is about some of the boys from Batavia High School, and what's interesting with this is I'm able to show this poster, and this poster shows the front covers of Newsweek, Sports Illustrated, and Look Magazine, and they all feature Batavia High School graduates. And in 1982, in January, the week before the Super Bowl of that year, the front cover of Newsweek magazine had a picture of the two quarterbacks for that year's Super Bowl. One was Joe Montana, and the other one was Kenny Anderson from the Cincinnati Bengals who graduated from Batavia High School in 1967. And to have a Super Bowl quarterback graduate from your high school really is quite an honor. And then in Sports Illustrated, I have the front cover from March 16th, 1970, and this highlights the four premier basketball players in the United States that were coming out of college, and one of them from the University of Kentucky is Dan Issel, who graduated from Batavia High School in 1966 and had a very distinguished career with the Denver Nuggets and the Kentucky Colonels, and ended up, when he retired, he was in the top 10 of all professional basketball players in their scoring numbers. I think, as he joked with me, he's down now in that, out of the top 10 because a lot of other famous athletes have now moved in and shot a lot of baskets, and they've lowered him a little bit, but to think that we had somebody from Batavia that had that honor. Then, and we have the front cover of Look Magazine from June 27th, 1962, and on this is an article, "Big Pitch by a Baseball Baby," and this features Byron Von Hoff, who graduated from Batavia High School in 1966, and went on to get, he was a bonus baby in the sports in that year, got a nice contract. Unfortunately, his pitching arm went bad on him in the minors, and he ended up having to give up his career, but he was well on his way to the major leagues when that happened. And then down here in the corner, I have a picture of Craig Sager, who graduated from Batavia High School in 1969, and he distinguished himself in sports broadcasting. He was known for his colorful coats, but he was also an excellent broadcaster, and the picture I have shows him in, let's see, he was there for the, at the time when Hank Aaron hit the home run, which broke Babe Ruth's previous record of the number of home runs hit by a Major League baseball player, and Hank Aaron hit the home run, and Sager ran out on the bases and interviewed him, and that interview was part of an exhibit at the Baseball Hall of Fame in Cooperstown, New York now. So, we've got Batavia High School people who have really, really performed in a very proud and honorable way, and something that we as a community can take great pride in, and so I'm very pleased and honored tonight to honor some other folks who are just now coming out of the school system and onward, upward to maybe some other great things in sports. I can't begin to tell you the number of mayors from the area who have been in my office and have seen these posters, and their reaction is, you always, why does Batavia have all these famous athletes? I don't have anybody like this from my town. And so, we seem to have it going here, and I think what we're about to hear Alan talk about tonight may be a sign that we're going to have more in the future, and I think that speaks very, very well of the Batavia sports program, Batavia High School sports program, and what we've been able to do here, because we've got a record that few others can match, and I could name you some names of some people that have seen this, they're from other towns, and they'd be, they'd just shake their heads when they walk into my office and see what we've done in Batavia. So, Alan, I'm going to turn this over to you.
All right, I'll be a little brief. I'm just going to go through and talk about each one of the two that are here from both boys and girls wrestling. You know, I know that the last probably, what, year and a half has been a real tough struggle for these kids, not being able to compete, not being able to get together and practice, all the things that they had to go through throughout the COVID experience the last year and a half. So, you know, my hat is off to them just in that respect. To get through all of that and then go on to become a champion in the state is, to me, just an amazing thing. I know that the work ethic that all the kids have, doesn't matter what sport they're in, is to me absolutely amazing to see time and time again when I'm out there to do a football game or a basketball game or anything out there, to see these kids constantly practicing, constantly talking to each other about things that they know they're going to change or things that they're going to do, or when the next practice is and how, you know, they get through all this stuff. I kind of hear a lot of that, and it is amazing to me to see that work ethic that all those kids have and the time and the energy that they, their parents, and their coaches put in to get to that point. So, that's something that I think we should all be proud of, and especially for these two that are here tonight. I've got two certificates of appreciation from the mayor. First off is one for Sidney Perry, was the 132-pound class state champion in girls wrestling, and it reads, "Given as an expression of admiration by the mayor and city council for positive sportsmanship, athletic achievement, and inspirational example that you provided as a member of the 2021 Batavia High School Girls Wrestling Team." And then the second one is for Mikey Caliendo, and that would be in 160-pound class state champion, boys wrestling, and that's also given as an expression of admiration by the mayor and city council for the positive sportsmanship, athletic achievement, and inspirational example that you provided as a member of the 2021 Batavia High School Boys Wrestling Team. So now, I would like to have their coach come up and say a few words about him because he's intimately much more involved in their careers as high school athlete, and Scott Bear, if you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I sure would. Okay, everybody can hear me okay? Yep. Okay, so, first of all, yeah, my name is Scott Bear, I'm the wrestling coach of the high school, and I just want to first thank you, Amir Shelkey, for being such an advocate of sports in this town, and as a history teacher, I always appreciate detailed history lessons, especially when it concerns, you know, things of civic pride. So, I believe that the two athletes we're going to be talking about tonight are ones that have the potential to do some great things. I know wrestling doesn't have the same notoriety as even professional golf or, you know, professional basketball or football, but I think you'll hear in just a second as I tell these kids stories that they are elite in our sport, and I'm very grateful and honored by that opportunity. And Alan, you hit nail on the head, this has been a really tough, 17 years for our sport, or 17 months, it seemed like 17 years, 17 months for our sport or whatever it's been. You know, last year, the girls' state championship in 2020 got canceled. Sidney wasn't with us yet, but she was an eighth grader, and the year was tough. I mean, imagine being in a high-contact indoor sport and, you know, not being able to, what's that we do, wrestle? You know? And so, but these, both of these kids turned a really tough situation where, as a school, we really couldn't engage in normal wrestling activity until around the first month of the year where our administration, I felt like, were really progressive in terms of, you know, trying to keep things safe and providing opportunities as soon as we possibly could. But the contact days that we had in the fall were basically, you know, kids shooting on foam rollers and, you know, a lot of shadow wrestling, and you guys have probably never even heard of that, but we did a lot of that. But these kids took their training to another level during the pandemic. They turned a real negative into a positive, and they both sought out elite competition around the Midwest, around the country. And so, I'd like to tell Sidney's story first. You know, Sidney has been in our wrestling club since I can remember, you know, being around the sport. I've been coached the high school for now, it's my 17th year, and not that she was there at the very beginning, but I remember her as a very little girl, one of the most coachable kids in our club. It's a credit to our club that they embraced girls wrestling very early, and because she was so coachable, our club trained her to be one of the elite youth wrestlers in the state. She came to us this year, our season was moved to the spring, and she kind of had to split her time between practicing in our room and also practicing the Olympic-style freestyle wrestling at her club in West Chicago, and so, but she did a great job with that. Every day she was in the room, she made our girls better. She served as a great competitive example, and when she finally got the opportunity to compete in our end-of-season girls' state championship tournament, she cruised into the finals match where she had an opponent who she was familiar with because she wrestled for the same club, who was ranked fourth in the country, and she pinned her in the second period, and so she really electrified the gym, and I believe between her and her other experienced, she's a freshman this year, but her other experienced teammate, Taylan Long, who has graduated the high school and is now going on to wrestle in college at Campbellsville University, and I have no doubt that Sidney will also wrestle at the college level and possibly beyond, that they both made our entire team better by their competitive example. And so, they threw their example, and because, you know, they had wrestled for a long time before girls wrestling was even a thing at the high school, our girls, I know were inspired by it, and we had five state place winners in our girls' team this year, enough to win the girls' state championship this year. So, really proud of all of the girls for wrestling, but Sidney put Batavia wrestling on the map in the state tournament by earning a state championship, and she's the second girl to have done that after her teammate Taylan Long. So, love to give her a great big round of applause here if we do that, I don't know if we do that here, but super proud of her. I hope that, you know, having a girls' team, having a successful girls' team will live up to the legacy of women like Sharon Moran that you talked about, Amir. So, Mikey Caliendo is another one of these, you know, Batavia homegrown stories. He has been a part of the club since he was maybe, what, second, third grade, something like that. I remember him as just a little kid, tough as nails from the very beginning, you know, extraordinarily dedicated to the sport, as I said, you know. You know, while we were working with the kids that worked out with us, the high school, he was traveling to places like South Carolina and Wisconsin and Iowa, wrestling the very best in the nation, and he, you're looking at one of the very best folk-style wrestlers, some of the top recruits in the nation. He's going to the North Dakota State University next year to wrestle and received scholarship to study and wrestle there, so he's using wrestling to further his life goals, but Mikey was, has had a storied career here. He came to us as a very talented freshman, and over the years, he's worked to better himself day after day, year after year, and he is the first three-time All-State wrestler in Batavia history. He earned fourth as a sophomore, fourth as a junior, and of course, won a state championship this year. He set the pins record this year, 74 pins is the most in of any wrestler in Batavia history. He set the nearfall record, that's the second-best thing to getting a pin, right, putting some there back. And then, and then he also leapfrogged over both Logan Arles and Clint Arles, two of my assistant coaches' sons, to take the top spot in terms of all-time wins at 148 wins in his career, and that was with a short season this year. So, you know, Mikey is a special athlete, special talent, extraordinarily highly-working kid, but maybe his biggest legacy is the inspiration that he will have served for not only alumni who called, you know, came out of the woodwork to call me to have me wish him congratulations because he got a job done that in the 63-year history of our program, no one else could accomplish, which is to win a boys' state championship, but he's always going to serve as inspiration for a lot of future Bulldogs, as will Sidney, as will Taylan, who've won state championships as well. So, we're extraordinarily proud of him. One of the things that, you know, I should say in terms of his dominance, and again, we're talking about the accomplishment of athletes, throughout his 36-match undefeated season this year, in match points, he didn't allow one offensive point scored against him, including at the state tournament, where that means that what he did was he either, I think there was two matches maybe where he won by just more than eight points, all the rest of the matches, he either pinned his opponent or he beat him by more than 15. And truly, truly dominant in every facet, and so, I'd like just like to end by saying that again, that these two wrestlers are extraordinary in what their accomplishments have been, but really with, just like Sidney and Taylan, Mikey, his legacy as well was a leader in the room. He made our team better. We had five state qualifiers this year, three state place winners, and he was a big force in that. I think he was the kind of the heartbeat of our team as he kept those guys training throughout the pandemic, got them to practices where they could go, and we're super proud of that as well. So, I guess we should probably give Mikey a round of applause as well. Thank you, thank you again for the opportunity to promote these two awesome high school athletes, and thanks for having us here.
I'd like to ask the two athletes, if they'd come up to the podium and meet, Alderman Wolf and myself. On behalf of the city council, I just want to commend and thank you two for the example you made to Batavia High School and the young people in this city, and you give us a amount to be proud, proud of this community. And I think really leave here with tonight is watching both of you in the future to see where you go and what you attain, because I think that the standard, the record, and the energy for yourself served you very well in the days ahead, and I'm proud of you again in the days ahead as you go forth and do other things. Watch you look great.
Yeah, exactly. Congratulations.
Okay, moving to the next item is a presentation on the update on the community garden. Michelle, are you here someplace? Want to come up and?
Hi, how are you? Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
So, thank you again for having us. My name is Michelle, founder, dreamer of the Batavia Garden, and thank goodness for Amanda and her land. So, if we didn't have her land in my dream, this wouldn't have been possible. So, thank you for all of your support. Oh, yeah, there was a very tall gentleman here earlier. So, thank you for having us again. I had asked in the last presentation if we could come back and kind of give you an update, and we have some pretty exciting things that have been going on over there. So, I would like to share that with you. I do have a slideshow, so I can flip through these slides really quick. I hope the screen share is on, on Zoom?
Yes.
Is that on?
Yep.
Okay, so, I think February, March was when my brain started thinking about having another community garden, having a community garden, period, and I posted on Facebook. That's when Amanda jumped on Facebook and said, "I have land, if you want to be a part of, you know, a garden, we can do it here on my land, I want to pay it forward, why don't you come take a look?" So, I went and took a look, and that's the slide that you're looking at on the screen right there. That's on Hart Road. So, her property is that five-acre lot there with my crayon marks on the screen, and she said, "This is a spot where you could possibly garden, and if you would like to do that." And I said, "Sure." So, I basically pasted out, and it's 100 feet by 60 feet, and then we subdivided that up into individual plots where people donated a small fee just to be able to use the land, and those people then garden their own gardens on that property because they live in an apartment or in a shady property at their own home, so those people are growing their own food in their own spots there. We utilize Amanda's well for a water supply right now, but we're having some issues once in a while with, if more than one person is there at the same time, we're having an issue because then the water pressure drops significantly when we're using the well, so it takes a really long time, and it's a pain in the rear end to water when there's more than one people, person there. So, we do have some water tanks there that we're looking for opportunities to fill those so that we can use them, and I do have- we're looking for opportunities to fill those so that we can use them. And I do have photos in here from the Marie Wilkinson Community Garden and how they have their setup. So I hope that maybe in the future, we could do that in our plans. This is the entrance to the garden. This was in March when Amanda and I met. That's the plot of land. It blows my mind that that's a garden. This is south-facing. That's standing at the entrance again. This was one of the posts I posted on Facebook to get volunteers or anybody that was interested in a garden spot. I posted a couple of these. We had three meetings at my house. It was during the pandemic. We all wore masks. We stood around a bonfire, and we just threw ideas at each other. And if we wanted to do something like this, who would be involved? And letting everybody know it was going to be from the ground up. It was going to be, we are scalping grass and building this garden. I don't even think I mentioned this the last time. I grew over 3,000 seedlings in my basement last season, at the beginning of this season, actually. Everything that you can plant in a ground, I have a grow room in my basement that we started all these seedlings. And I grow these seedlings because we put them in three different gardens. I have a personal garden. I also garden at the Ginger Creek Community Church. That food goes to the Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry in Aurora and then the Batavia Garden. I also do a seed sale, a seedling sale, to offset the cost that it takes for me to start this project in my basement. Then I invested in a couple greenhouses because those were going to outgrow those little tiny pots in my basement, and we needed a place to put them. And my sister, thank God, she loves Facebook, thank you, Brandy, she found free compost and tagged me in the post immediately. And the gentleman that owns that beautiful red house there in the picture in Wayne rotates his crops, and he has a horse stable with 10 horses on it. So this is manure that has been piled up. And we found Abbott Tree Farm, Abbott Tree Service out of Wayne. They dropped off a 40-yard dumpster at this gentleman's house, and this guy had a bobcat and filled it with all that manure. We had 40 yards of manure delivered for free. That's the spot where we put the garden. And then that sod also, we were able to give this all away. We posted again on Facebook for people to come pick up the free sod if they had some spots in their yards. We tried to do as much repurposing, reusing, and recycling as possible. These food crates were donated to the Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry this spring, and my partners over there told me to come grab as many as I could, and we utilized them when we had the seed sale. And now we're also using them to fill them with the produce so we could take it down to Interfaith Food Pantry. This is just collections of different items that we found on Facebook for free that people graciously delivered to us so we can utilize them in the garden. Those are our water tanks. I do have access to four more of those from Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry because they have four that they're getting rid of, and we have access to get them anytime we want. So we could have, actually, those are 300-gallon tanks. Another woman donated fencing that we actually tore apart and utilized them to build boxes that we're growing the food in for the Interfaith Food Pantry. This is the wood collection that I had at the church, and then I also was able to utilize that at the Batavia Community Garden. This is Haas Tree Service, and Adam Standard with Market Ready that's here in Batavia, he rented the truck, and Ishmael from Haas Tree Service here locally went over to that farm and picked up some more of that manure for us. So we tried to get our hand on as much of that as possible because it's black gold to a gardener. That's called a skid steer, that thing. It's like tiny bobcat, but that thing is pretty nice. I want to buy one of those and let everybody borrow it. Haas Tree Service also did a lot of work in our forest preserve here in Batavia. So when they chopped down all their trees there in the forest preserve, they chipped up the trees, and Adam just randomly saw him driving around one day and followed him till he stopped, and he asked, "Can we have your chips?" So he brought us probably 15 loads of wood chips.
That was Wood Chip Mountains, right?
Yeah. They played on that. You played on that, right, honey? Who needs sand? We have chips. Seedlings obviously getting bigger, peppers, tomatoes, broccoli, cauliflower, cabbages. I invested in more greenhouses because we're running out of space. That's in my backyard. This is at the Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry. This is how they have their setup. They'll put four on, you know, 16 pallets just to raise them up off the ground a little bit because it gives it a little bit more pressure. You can hook a hose up to it, and it'll give you a little pressure into your garden. That's an old Home Depot rack that they got, you know, from a closing Home Depot, and they constructed it. And the fire department's right down the street from this community garden on Highland in Aurora, right across from Marie Wilkinson, and the fire department comes through every couple of days or once a week or whatever and tops off their tanks. And that's me getting creative with my car to collect cardboard. That was at Dick's Sporting Goods. They gave us all their bike boxes when they were constructing all their bikes through the beginning of the spring season. I think the record was 42 bike boxes in my car. I did it.
And we use the cardboard as a weed barrier throughout the garden, so we don't have to.
Yeah, nobody wants to pick weeds. Then I found a company in West Chicago that was giving away Gaylord boxes. I didn't even know those were a thing. Those cardboard boxes, when you lay them out on the floor, cover about 16 feet by four feet wide. They're 5/8 inch thick. So they're super thick, and they, nothing's coming through those if you put them down on the ground. Now getting into the sod cutting. Ishmael from the Tree Service came and cut this entire plot, 100 feet by 60 feet plot with that little bitty thing. And then we had the support, and I have a relationship with a family that has kids in the Aurora West Soccer League, so they all came out to do a team-building event at our garden where they rolled all that sod. This is a bunch of the wood chips that we put down for our parking spots. That's still the entrance from the first picture that you saw in the beginning where my car was sitting, and then to the left there is where we put the wood chips for parking. And this is just the start of rolling the sod, and we realized we needed to get reinforcements in there to help us. So the Aurora Soccer Team brought us 22 girls to come out and help us one day. That's when we finally stepped up the little seedlings out of the trays into bigger cups so they had more room to grow, and that's when we put them in the greenhouses. All the seedlings were started right around March 11. Batavia Magazine featured the story of the Batavia Garden, and that's a picture in front of my house. The Daily Herald came out and did a little clip, and that's the soccer team. That's the soccer team. They rolled sod. They took the staples and tape off all the cardboard. They pulled nails out of the fencing so that we can utilize that lumber again to build our boxes. And they rolled that sod, and people just kept pulling up, and we kept loading trunks with sod. That was a lot of sod. It was a beautiful day. And then Rosati's right here on Wilson, up by the 7-Eleven. They sponsored the lunch. So we were very grateful for Rosati's. So thank Rosati's. That's my dog, your dog's butt. And it's Chewy in the bottom, and her little, her little boys, and the girls from the soccer team. They really did have a great time. That's Coach Wags in the middle in the gray shirt. And it was nice that the team came out because I had a bag of coins, and all the girls would grab a coin out of the bag. And then if they all had dimes, they were rolling sod. If they had quarters, they were pulling nails. So it kind of mixed and matched them, so they had to do something with other girls that they didn't ever work with before, which was kind of fun. Growing plants. And that's what it looked like after the sod was gone. You see the spray paint on the ground? That was us divvying up all the spots that we were going to rent out for people to grow their own food. And then we staked it off with stakes and string so everybody knew how big their place was. And then we carpeted it with cardboard. And then we had a windstorm. Remember? A wind came through, and half the stuff was all over the yard, so we had to relay it.
But all this cardboard here, this is only for the plots that are going to the Interfaith Food Pantry. That gives you an idea of how big the spot is that's just going to them.
That's the center walkway, standing at the east side of the plot. That's a eight-foot walkway there. It goes right down the center, so you have plots on each side going all the way down. And then we put those boxes together. I called a couple friends that had drills and saws and said, "Come on out, and let's build these boxes." They had no clue what I was talking about. Even people in the garden had no clue when they came. They were like, "I don't know what she's doing. What's she doing? I thought she's building a garden. What's the cardboard?" Nobody understood, but just wait. You'll see. Vision, vision it is. And then you put a ton of cardboard down. You put a ton of wood chips down. It's considered a no-till method. If you do go out there in the garden, you do till, you're just waking up weeds, and then they're going to pop through, and they're going to come through with a vengeance. And I don't pull weeds, and I'm not going to make anybody else do it that's going to volunteer. And so now you can see the construction of the boxes, and then you put the manure inside those boxes in wood chips in the walkway. And all this spot that you're looking at with all these boxes, this is specifically for the Interfaith Food Pantry. And that's what it looks like in how we drew it. So there's 10 by 30 spots. There's 10 by 15 spots, and then there's, it turned out to be 5 by 14 spots because we kind of overcut the sod, so we just gave everybody an extra four feet. Yeah, I don't know where that came from. And then that is specifically the Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry boxes that we built. And in every one of those colored boxes is food that's grown specifically for the families in need. That is a Home Depot truck with donated pallet of soil, because on top of the manure, the manure gets hydrophobic, which means it doesn't hold water. So I needed to put at least two or three bags in each box that we built so it would hold and retain water. Plant sale, some of our renters. Two of her herd. And this is planting day. We had about eight people show up for planting day because when we finally got the sod or the soil to put in those boxes, we were finally able to plant. And the garden went in super late. It was June 22, I think.
Yeah, it was really late.
Which is unfortunate for us because our growing season is really short, but we have to go by what we get because we're on such a tight budget. And then these are the tiny little plants that you see in there, and you just look at them and tell them, "Good luck." More kids shoveling some chips, helping out. These are people's plots. And that's what it looked like about a month and a half ago. Free plants. We got those from Schaefer Greenhouse.
People would pick up free plants they find on the side of the road and just throw them in the middle and be like, "All right, it's a free throw. Whoever wants tomatoes, grab tomatoes."
That must have been from my house.
We have no idea what we're growing, and me and Roy have a little plot, but.
And then that's just, you know, straw bales. It's really good for mulching because we are in such direct sun for so much of the day that water evaporates right out of your soil. So by putting the mulch, you definitely hold in the water, and now we're not wasting. Starting to look like a garden here, right? You still walk through there, and you're like, "Please grow." Stop. That's squash there on the left. Cucumbers. She designed her own shirt. And then Jarrell is a friend of mine that owns Drone, and as you can see, this was just shot on Saturday, the difference in a couple of weeks, and thank God for the rain. So this event was Saturday. These were the most recent shots that we did. And I still get overwhelmed to think that.
Three months ago, it was grass. It's wild. Just walking people through is incredible, you know.
And to know 90% of that grew from a seed in my basement.
Yeah.
This is an aerial Google Maps spot. So in that yellow box is where we're looking at these pictures right now. That's a drone shot from Saturday. Another drone shot. Home Depot was with us on Saturday. They have a Team Depot team, so people that volunteer in the community for Home Depot, they actually come and do any kind of community service that you're in need of. They were able to give us a grant to help us pay for some supplies that we've got, and they had three people on their team. And thanks to Laura, we also had Tony out with the Rotary Club, so he had a team of like five and six people, too, that were out there with us on Saturday. And again, Rosati's came through and helped us sponsor lunch.
And we also got cookies from Windmill.
Yeah, Windmill Grill and Pits for you, right here. They donated dessert with cookies and coupons, so they can get some more. That's Adam and the bobcat. Thank God he showed up. Lot of wood chips moving and didn't have to use all the wheelbarrows. And that was our list of things to do. Bridget, that's you.
Well, congratulations on a terrific job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I mean, I would, and that was Eileen from the Food Pantry. Her and her husband came out. But yeah, that's pretty much our last event that we did. That's the Rotary Club right there. So I, obviously, we have Batavia Community Garden Facebook page. Anybody can jump on there, message us if they ever want to volunteer. I actually just got Honor Society from Batavia, no, Honor Society from Aurora that contacted me through Coach Wags and the soccer team that she wants to send over Honor Society kids. And my passion, too, is educating kids on growing food and how to grow food and how things actually work in a garden. So I'd be happy to take any volunteers over there anytime. And then we also have Batavia Community Garden Facebook page. What else? Oh, the YouTube channel. I do post a YouTube video every week, usually right around Wednesday, Thursday, of the progress of the gardens. So you can always take a look at the YouTube channel. It's Garden Jargon on the YouTube channel. And that's all I have for today.
So if somebody watching, we get a lot of people watch this over the next couple of weeks at different times. If somebody wanted to send you a donation to help support this, can you give us an address or an email or a mailing address?
My email is allgardenjargon@gmail.com. All of that information is on the Facebook page. I also, my business is Garden Jargon. There's a Facebook page for Garden Jargon. It's J-A-R-G-O-N. That's on Facebook. You can contact me through that as well. And my non-for-profit is Garden Jargon, and we'd be happy to take donations because we have plans of a pergola because Amanda's doing a lot of classes on how to process food and make ointments from the herb garden and stuff like that. And she has a lot of people out there doing art classes for the kids. So it would be nice to have a little bit of shade out there. So one day we will, once the lumber prices drop a bit.
So I would offer that as the mayor of Batavia, I get to know a lot of folks in town and what their concerns are. I've got a lot of senior citizens in town who I think are pretty generous, but their problem is they don't own a computer.
Yeah.
They'll give me the line, "Well, I went to high school before 1970, and I never saw a computer or any class from my men."
Yeah.
So Jeff, if I want to make a donation, you got to give me a mailing address. Can you give us a mailing address?
I would take them a basket of vegetables and say, "Thank you," and collect.
Can you give us a mailing address?
Yeah. It's 821 East Wilson Street.
Okay.
Batavia 60510.
All right, good. Thank you.
We appreciate your time, and thank you for having us again.
Appreciate all you're doing. Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add about the community garden produced a garden baby. When we were going through the garden, we were talking about how that plot of vegetables and produce goes to the food pantry, and this one asked, "Well, what if they can't get to the food pantry?" You know, if they work late or, you know, are maybe kind of embarrassed to go. So he decided he wanted to do a little farm stand. So there's a farm stand in front of.
So there's a farm stand in front of our house, and it's called Roy's Take What You Need Farm Stand. So his produce, he has a garden going and a community garden and his own personal garden, which he was giving out quick-knock squash earlier. So he wants to make sure everyone knows that if you need to, you know, if you forgot a tomato coming home from work and you need it, come on over and grab it from his little stand. There's, people have given us non-perishables. We have non-perishables and we have produce.
Good job, Roy.
Keep up the great work.
Excellent. Let's give Roy a hand.
Thank you. Okay, 10 is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Margaret Pearl.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's amazing what she can do. I don't even like to get dirt under my fingernails, so I'm very impressed with that. Hey, first of all, I wanna give a shout out to my new friend, Polly Ernstin. I know she's watching tonight. She always watches, not for me, but I did meet her at Cocktails in the Park this weekend, and she said she's a big fan, so shout out to Polly. Cocktails in the Park was a great event. I know I saw a lot of you there Saturday night, so kudos to Main Street for that wonderful event. Before I get started about what's going on with the chamber, I wanted to present Roman Sekel with a certificate. Will you come up here, Roman, please? Roman Sekel, of course, is a city attorney with Rendell and Jensen's, but he's also served on the chamber board for the last six years. So I wanted to give Roman a wonderful certificate to say thank you so much for your hard work, dedication, and I know that I will still be calling you. His level of commitment and service to the chamber is amazing, so thanks again. So the chamber is in communication with the King County Health Department. We have a presentation being given to the chamber tomorrow by Deputy Director Michael Isaacson. We're keeping our eyes closely on the changes in the mask guidelines, and we'll convey what is changing to the local, to our local businesses. As I say every month, we are hearing from businesses about how difficult it is to fill their open positions. So we are advocating for our businesses and trying to encourage them to use our job board and so the employers can post jobs and the employees or job seekers can find jobs by using our job board. So if you're hiring or if you know somebody that needs a job, please send them to our job board at bataviacamber.org. State Senator Karina Via and I discussed issues facing our Batavia businesses today at the chamber office. I'm happy that our government reps check in regularly with me to keep their finger on the pulse of what's going on in our community. I also would like to announce to a few new members of the chamber, suncom.tv, the Constantino Law Firm, and Barnwood and Beeswax. Barnwood and Beeswax owners will be joining me as my guests in a minute, but for information about these businesses and if you would please use their services, go to bataviacamber.org for more details. We, of course, are continuing our education and networking for our businesses. We had a speed networking event last month that you could meet 100 people in 50 minutes, so we heard a lot of good feedback about that, a lot of great connections. Tomorrow, no, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, August 4th, is our not-for-profit forum. That's the forum of local executive directors of not-for-profits that come together and talk about what they need, what they could do for each other. So if you run a not-for-profit, you're welcome to join us. Please let me know. On Thursday, August 5th, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the chamber office for Apex Leadership. On Saturday, August 7th, this weekend, at 1:00, we have our KSC championship, state championship chili cook-off down at the Batavia Riverwalk. We're still looking for judges, so if any of you are interested in judging, please give me a call or email me, margaret@bataviacamber. We have some esteemed reps joining us as judges this Saturday. It'll be a great, great afternoon, so please come down. And Tuesday, August 10th, at 11:30, we have our annual Batavia Women in Business Progressive Luncheon. This is another great networking luncheon where you meet lots of other business owners or potential clients by moving tables during the progressive luncheon and connecting with many, many people. There's 16 chambers participating, so it'll be a really great way to meet and connect with a lot of people again. Wednesday, August 11th, is our Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club at Comfort Inn and Suites. Wednesday, August 11th, at 9:00 AM, is our virtual seminar about emergency preparedness, how to create a plan to protect your organization. Thursday, August 12th, is another ribbon-cutting at Kings and Queens Children's Academy down on Wilson and Redant. Friday, August 13th, at noon, is our ribbon-cutting ceremony for Barnwood and Beeswax. More to be said about that in a minute. Wednesday, August 11th, actually, I'm sorry, it's 18th, we have our Rebuild and Re-energize Series, and the topic will be sales marketing to help you dominate your market. And then finally, Wednesday, August 18th, is our evening networking. It will be hosted at My Place Hotel in North Aurora, and our charity of the month that we will be spotlighting is Tri-City Family Services. So please come join us for that. That'll be at 4:30 till, until 6:30. As always, I request that you follow the chamber on Facebook and Instagram and check the chamber's website, bataviacamber.org, to register for our events, sign up as a business member, and find other pertinent information. Before I introduce my guests, does anybody have any questions for me this evening? Okay, good, good. So now I'd like to introduce Joe and Kristen, the owners of Barnwood and Beeswax, the vintage home decor and more shop that recently opened at 14 North Island Avenue. If you have not stopped in yet, I encourage you to do so. There's something in there for everyone. So please welcome Joe and Kristen. Come on up.
Thanks, Margaret. Okay, let's see if I can read this. Thank you for the introduction, Margaret. Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Joseph Galakis, and this is my lovely wife and business partner, Kristen. And it is with great pleasure and pride that we can announce to everyone here tonight that we've opened our new store in town called Barnwood and Beeswax. It's just a stone's throw down the street from here in the southernly direction. We opened on July 1st, and it had a very successful first month. I guess you could classify our store as kind of a business collective in that we have 14 highly skilled vendors that each craft and sell different kinds of items. We have kind of like a small boutique-y atmosphere, so it's not like a very large store, but it's, we're going on quality versus quantity. Some of the big selling items that we sell are scented candles, we have gourmet chocolate, macrame jewelry, soap, upcycled vintage furnishings. Most of these items are designed and crafted by the vendors as well as ourselves, me and my lovely wife. We were recently published in the Daily Herald, due in part mostly for being the first and only chocolate seller in downtown Batavia, so that's kind of exciting. We also provide in-home consultations for installations on barnwood accent walls, mantles, shiplapped walls, shutters, islands, bars and bar tops, as well as coffee and end tables, pretty much anything that a carpenter like myself can fabricate or come up with an idea in their head to make. That being said, I am a self-taught welder and carpenter for 20 years now, ever since I got out of the military, and my wife has helped me learn and showed me what I was doing wrong in all my measurements, so we make a good team. Some exciting upcoming news is that we are going to be having our ribbon-cutting event on Friday, the 13th, at noon, and hope, excuse me, hosting an open house for our new fall items on the 14th. Let's see here. We are located at 14 North Island Avenue downtown, and our phone number is 630-454-4256. We're also located on Facebook at Barnwood and Beeswax. That's Barnwood ampersand Beeswax. And we're also on Instagram at Barnwood and Beeswax, all one word, no ampersand, just Barnwood A-N-D Beeswax. We're open Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 5 on Wednesdays and Thursdays, 10 to 6 Fridays and Saturdays, and 11 to 5 on Sunday. We are very happy to call Batavia our store's home and appreciate all the help that this town offers to small businesses such as, such as ours. For those of you here and at home who like to support our nation's military members, I'm proud to say that I am a combat veteran who served in the U.S. Army as a medic in Operation Iraqi Enduring Freedom. I was also made a disabled veteran from that conflict, and as such, it's a big deal for me and my wife that we have this store and are successful, in spite of hurdles like disability. Any success that we have is due to the efforts of my wife and our wonderful vendors, and also because of the support of this town and our customers, especially the Chamber of Commerce. So please keep us in mind in the future for any shopping or home designing plans. If anybody has any questions for me, please feel free to ask them now. If not, I'll just ...
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. The last five days, I guess, I must've had three different people ask me, "Who you are and when did you get there?" And why didn't they know you were there? Because they're gonna come in and visit you.
Right.
So I think you've caught on, but people were kinda surprised. Two people told me they went to get ice cream, and they stumbled onto your store.
Yes.
You're getting, you're getting some fans, but they're ...
We are riding on the coattails of the creamery, and I am not embarrassed to say that a lot of our profits have gone into the creamery already. And more will probably be spent there as well.
You had me at chocolate.
Yeah, the chocolate is very good. I wish I could say that we make that. Our vendor, Andy, her online store is called The Chocolate Shop with two Ps and an E. She's amazing. She is probably our best vendor right now, and the truth isn't flattering. She's, she's very exceptional at what she does. Her and her daughter make the chocolate. My wife is very talented. She makes all the candles. I always think she's baking upstairs, and I'm, I'm always a little bit hurt when I go upstairs and just find out she's trying out a new candle. And like, I can't really eat that, but that's all right. It'll transfer into money later that I can spend at the ice cream store, so that works too.
I was gonna say, I've been in multiple times and have bought a candle as a gift, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
It is beautiful.
Yes, it is beautiful.
We're, we're trying. And, and the beauty of our store is that, like I said, most of our vendors' items, including ourselves, we pride ourselves in the fact that we make them. Of course, we can't stock the entire store with made items, because then we would never have time to actually work in the store, 'cause we'd be working in our shops. But a good majority of everything that we make and the vendors that we seek out are makers, and they're top tier. They're, they're the best we can find. So if you're looking, especially coming into the fall season, if you're looking for gift items, the store is, you're supporting hardworking Americans that are trying to, you know, carve their own niche and not sending the money back overseas or ... So I think that's kind of exciting. A lot of these consignment stores or stores that are like vendor collaborations, we've been doing this for a little while now in, in other people's stores, and I can honestly say that we probably have the highest ratio of creators that I've ever seen. So that's what we're trying to do different. And I think that Batavia is a perfect launch point for a store like ours because of how much support the town does for mom and pops and creators. So we're really excited to be here, very excited.
We're excited to have you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for choosing Batavia and setting up, and we wish you the very best in the days ahead.
Thank you very much.
From the momentum I'm hearing about you, I think you are gonna be ...
I hope so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, going to the administrative report.
Mayor, can I, can I say something real quick? I just wanted to say that being a representative on this city of Batavia, Chamber of Commerce for three, for the last three years, it's been an excellent experience. For the last 16 months, businesses, as well as the chamber, have, it's been quite an experience. And I think Margaret's done an excellent job since she's been appointed, and I wanna extend our applause to her. Thank you, Margaret.
Sure.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it. I second your motion.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's pretty incredible, the three organizations, the city, the chamber, and Main Street, how we all came together at the beginning of what we knew would be a crisis situation for our local businesses. And we did a lot of things together that the city alone would never have been able to accomplish without the support coming from you, Margaret, and all of the people who work with your organization, and then also Beth Walker and the Main Street organization as well. And you've seen the business community here in Batavia while it struggled, just as other communities struggled with all of the things that they were struggling with. But you've also seen a tremendous number of success stories in the midst of a global crisis. And I think what you guys were saying about Batavia being a place that creates space and wants to cultivate the American dream of being able to start your own business. And I love what you guys are doing, is giving a space to those who are not ready to go out there on their own yet. But because you've rented this space and put together such a great collection of makers, we've got a lot of that going on here in Batavia. And kind of like the craft beer industry, it's sort of like more of that in one place, brings all of those customers together, and a rising tide raises all ships. So thank you very much and wish you well in your business. Sure. I begin tonight just to remind everybody that tomorrow we have another joint meeting with the Park District Board. It's a continuation of the conversations that we've been having with Hitchcock Design Group about which concepts we would like to put forth for public discussion as it pertains to the dam removal and the depot pond. And at the last meeting, Hitchcock Design Group was asked to put more detail into how they came up with the, the cost estimates that they had previously provided. And so that will be a main part of our discussion tomorrow, and it's hoped that from there we can decide on which of those concepts we might wanna schedule some open houses. And that's where we'll invite in the community at large to ask any questions that they might have and have those answered by Hitchcock Design Group and WBK Engineering, and then for the public also to offer their opinions and comments on which designs would be preferred. And that is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. You can find information about how to attend that meeting online by going to the city website and under Government, going to Agendas and Minutes, and finding the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting for August 3rd. I'm like, is it August already? It is, for August 3rd, and it will give you information about how to register for that Zoom meeting. City Hall, following the CDC guidance, as well as IDPH and King County Health Department, we have, City Hall is still open to the public, but if you plan on visiting, we ask that you please wear a mask whether or not you are vaccinated. We have put back in place the drop boxes in the, at the main entrance if you wish to conduct business without having to go to the department. However, the Community Development Department and Utility Billing Offices are still open, and so if you do need to visit the counter to conduct business, you may do so, again, masked, and the employees that you encounter at those public service counters will also be masked. But you may want to ... counters will also be masked. But you may want to take advantage of the many ways that you can conduct business with the City of Batavia, both on, on the phone or also online. In fact, I was gonna say as part of our information systems update that we are adding some additional permit types for web processing for our online system. In Public Works, we're continuing in Ward 1 on the final phase of drainage improvements. And the contractor is on schedule to complete all that work by this fall. The Main Street contractor has begun removing some of the bicycle sheroes on the south side of the street. It was noted that there seemed to be too many of those along that way. And yes, in fact, there were. And then they're also going to be installing new sheroes on the north side to match. Concrete foundation work is going on at the water treatment plant project. And staff plans to provide the city council with monthly progress updates similar to what was done for the wastewater treatment plant improvements now that construction has begun in earnest. A Batavia Police Department officer has just completed the basic bicycle officer course, which is offered by Mobile Training Unit Number 3 and has been certified as a bicycle officer. And so it's the intention of the department that this officer will be assigned to bicycle detail on a part-time basis beginning either early fall or next We have begun to receive monthly reports from Colony, our bike share vendor. And it was noted that Batavia had over 144 bike rentals in the month of July. And Batavia ranks in the top three when it comes to the most utilized pickup and drop-off bike locations. The South Plaza here is number one and the Depot Museum is number three. So we're doing really well with our bike share program this year. I don't think we had 144 bike rentals all of last season. So those are pretty impressive statistics in terms of growth. And I mentioned how busy our information systems department has been. In addition to adding those additional online permit types, they also have begun working on the Viewworks mobile rollout and started with testing the security protocols to make sure that our data is protected when people are accessing the programs in the field. And then next, they'll be setting up the actual mobile apps and testing them for use. They're also scheduling a finance system upgrade with Central Squared. This program has been limited to Internet Explorer, which is soon to be a discontinued browser. And after the upgrade, we should have other browser options. And the upgrade also will fix a very old version of Cognos report writing program that we have. And so we can begin to utilize that more to create reports. And we're furthering our implementation for the LaserFIS document management program. So far, the department has proceeded with the admin department. And next, they'll be meeting with HR to discuss their needs for the program. They have a tremendous amount of paper-based documentation that they're looking forward to getting into the LaserFIS system to free up some space for them in their department. And that's all that I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move then to committee reports, Community Development.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, Public Utilities?
Anybody have a Utilities report?
There's nothing to report.
No report, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. City Services?
Nothing to report at this time.
Government Services?
Nothing to report.
All right. All right. We have other business from the council? All right. Mayor's report, very quickly. I just have two observations. One is that on the 13th, they're gonna have the flags and flagel benefit over on Water Street between Wilson and First. They're raising money for the Sagrans Flag Memorial. That's fairly well-funded, but we need a little bit more to put the thing into action. And they're gonna have Steakfish and was it seven or eight breweries are going to be there offering their fairs of brew? And so we encourage people to come down and support that because all the money is going for a very good community cause. The other thing I just want to make some observation about, I've, I've spent the weekend on conversations regionally with a number of folks, and I'm not gonna name names, outside of Batavia about the whole wearing the mask thing. And I guess, the two messages I guess I got in talking to people at a very high level is, is that they're concerned about where this pandemic could go if this new variant takes place and comes in and impacts people. So they're wanting to ask everybody to voluntarily wear a mask, especially if you're gonna be in a building or in contact or going to an event or whatever have you. And I stress the word voluntarily because that's what this is. There is, there's no law behind it. We're just trying to get everybody to do the very best thing that they can do as far as this goes. I'm very proud of the fact that Batavia's numbers of those who have gotten a shot or who have participated or have, our past history over the last year and a half as this thing has terrorized the area, we've been one of the lowest in the area to maintain people that don't have it. So that's, or people, we, we don't have many people that have it, I guess I should say. So we've been very, very fortunate. I credit that to the wise council that many of us taken and gotten a shot. And I guess the biggest message I think I heard this weekend was is that as a public official, I really need to reemphasize and encourage everybody in my community, if you haven't already, get yourself vaccinated, please. Because that seems to be the major deterrent from this thing spreading into your life or your family's life. And the government, to their credit, has made getting vaccinated a fairly easy process. You know, in Batavia, we've got our own spot where you can still get a shot. And if you can't find it there, there's plenty of other places nearby you can get it. And so please, if you haven't gotten a shot, please get a shot because the vaccination seems to be the real hedge that fights this thing. And I think there's a big avoidance on the part of the governments above us that they want to stay away from any of this stuff where businesses get mad because people won't come because they have to wear a mask or if somebody does wear a mask and somebody doesn't, then they get into disagreements and whatever. Everybody's trying to seek cooperative ventures here and ideas that encourage cooperation but also safety and that you wear the mask if you're gonna be in a group. And that specifically, you please go, if you haven't already, get yourself vaccinated. So that's my message to the community for the week. And with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alvin Wolf, second by Alvin Rosado. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.